Good evening. We'll call to order the City Commission meeting for the City of Eldorado, January 22nd, 2019. We'll have roll call, please.
May I ask?
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Madig?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkerson?
Present.
Thank you. Next on our agenda would be invocation. Somebody from the audience, thank you.
Thanks again, folks, for letting us do this. It's a pleasure to be able to come. Open your meetings with prayer.
Thank you.
So let's do that now, let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to bless these men and women and to ask for your presence to be here with us. The decisions that are made and the things that are discussed. God, we live in a country that is often seems like it's more divided than united. And so I just would ask that here in Eldorado and the decisions that are made as these men and women talk to the people in the city and the discussions happen and just the business of the city goes on, that the focus would be on those things that bring us together and not those things that tear us apart. Would you give these men and women wisdom as they make decisions for the rest of us, as they stand in for the rest of the citizens? Would you give them discernment to know the right way to go, the difference between right and wrong, and the right choices to be made? God, would you just bless them and the time that they give to us to make a better city and to provide a better government for us? And I pray tonight as we are in here and it's warm, but it's pretty nasty outside, that you would be with each one as we go from this place, that you'd get us home safely and be with all those who are on the roads tonight. Father, thank you that we live in a country and here in Eldorado, a city where bad weather and things don't shut us down, that we are able to continue and to get the things done that need to be. So would you bless us? Would you bless this city? Would you bless these men and women and these people? In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Being no proclamations and recognitions, we'll move to personal appearances, and I don't have any of those either. Public comment. Anyone from the audience wish to address the commission under public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda, item eight. Minutes and such from, they were all sent to us in our packet before. Any questions or comments on the minutes or anything in the consent agenda? Being none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Not having any old business, we'll move to new business. We have department presentations from Public Utilities and the Parks and Rec Department.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk about what's been going on over the last year and some of the things we hope to do in the upcoming year. I do want to say thank you to the dedicated people that work in the Public Utilities Department. They do a great job every day. They impress me every day. Been with the city for a long time and this is by far, this is the best combination of people we've ever had. We've got well-trained people that are dedicated and do a great job and so very proud of the work that they do. Some of the projects, to highlight some of the projects that we had going on this last year, one of the most recent projects completed was the new water line for Union Tank Car. They needed fire flows for that facility and we figured out a way to get them those flows and they had a really aggressive timeline and were able to work with not only the contractor but KDHE to get the plans approved quickly and complete that project. Water distribution crew, you can see, hover the mouse over the vault, they installed the valves and the new meter out there, backflip preventer, all those things, got the vault ready to go. The project involved a boring a new line into the river. So it was, project went there and go. Next project, McCollum Water Tower, sandblasting repainting. This is a project we've been talking about doing and has been delayed for several years. Glad to get that done. Doing a project like this, it sounds simple, you just get a contractor and you sandblast and paint it. But there's a lot of work that goes into inspecting, figuring out what needs fixed and talking to the paint people to figure out what paints are approved by AWWA and writing the specifications to make sure you get good bids and so forth. So very involved project and so this tower should be good to go for another 30 or 40 years, we hope. Another project that has been a long time coming, the water treatment plant had its 81st birthday this last year, so 81 years of continuous operation. What you're seeing on the left-hand side here is the outside, if you go north of the water treatment plant up against the building is called the final basin. Final basin receives the water after the sedimentation basins before it goes in on top of the filters. Well, this wall is a common wall on the inside of that, the water treatment plant on the right side. It's a shared wall or a common wall with the filters and so these large cracks that started appearing were not just cosmetic. When we would take down the final basin, water would pour from the filters out into the final basin through these cracks. And so something that really needed to be taken care of, both from a structural and from a water treatment standpoint, because those two waters are not supposed to mix. So figured out how to seal them, got with a contractor, wrote the specs, and this was a pretty detailed project. Here you can kind of see some of the process. They had to drill holes in the wall and inject epoxy foam repeatedly, would fill the filters back up with water to see if it sealed, and this went on for weeks and weeks before they finally got it. So it took the contractor probably four or five times longer to finish this project than they anticipated. Luckily, it was bid at one price and so that was the price that we had to pay, but they did a good job and we got it completed. Another project that we've been working on is to inventory our top 200 water users and at the same time also look at the meter installations for those. What we came out of this with is to install magnetic flow meters for all the rural water districts, our largest customers, Holly Frontier, Union Tank. So we're going in and systematically replacing meters with magnetic flow meters that can be calibrated on an annual basis. The other advantage of this, one of the things that we recently ran across when we had these downtown water leaks is we're trying to figure out what's going on with pressure in our distribution system. It occurred to us that we only monitored one place in the whole town, pressure. Pressure's only, there's only one pressure meter in the entire town and that's at the water treatment plant. We don't know what's going on with pressure out in the rest of the system. We do have a booster pump station on the west side of town. There is pressure monitored there, but it's basically, it's a set point. So if we tell it, we want 55 PSI, that's what the pressure is and the pumps ramp up, ramp down to hold that pressure, so it's constant. So the other advantage of putting these new magnetic flow meters is they will be tied to telemetry, so we will be able to monitor pressure at each rural water district meter, which is on the perimeter of our town. And the other thing we're looking at is monitoring pressure in the most vulnerable areas to water leaks, and that's our downtown area. Downtown is the oldest pipes in town, they're 90 to 120 years old, and they're also at the highest pressure of any pipes in town because of the proximity to the water treatment plant. So very vulnerable to leaks, and I will get into that here in a minute. So that's another project we're working on. Some other large maintenance projects, you know, I talked about the water plant being in continuous operation for 81 years. Over the years, what we found is basically everything, every moving part in the water treatment plant eventually has to be replaced, repaired, refurbished, something, because all those parts are 81 years old. This project that you can see right here, if you see, there's a boat in one of the sedimentation basins, a large valve stem that goes down to the bottom of this 16-foot deep basin. The valve stem basically broke off with the basin full. So you can't drain the basin, you can't fix it. So I had to pump water over out of that and then go down on a boat, turn it open to drain the basin and then fix it. So there's just a continual process of trying to figure out what's the next thing that's going to need replaced so that we can keep this water treatment plant running another 80 years. With the work that we've done, I can confidently say that this water plant will continue to produce great water for the next 80 years. So it's in better shape than it's ever been, but it's just because of continued projects to repair, replace. Another project that happened in the fall, we've got five high-service pumps that pump water from the water plant out in the distribution system. Two of our largest, the 250 horsepower pumps were pulled. One of them had a problem with seals and the other one had a problem with bearings and so those projects are complete and we're ready for spring. Another project, 14 years ago, we added anthracite media to the filters and over the process of 14 years, a lot of the anthracite media washes out of the filters, so you start losing filter media depth. And so we added about 600 bags to get four inches of replacement anthracite on the filters. And that's a project that water distribution came in and helped us. Southern's even loaned us the carts to be able to haul these anthracite bags from the loading dock into the water treatment plant, so we've got some...
It takes 600 bags to bring it up four inches?
600 bags to bring it up four inches, yeah. There's a lot of, you walk in those filter galleries, I mean, it's the length of the building almost, so there, that's a lot of media. And just think about how many it would take to completely replace the media, because the media is probably four feet deep total, so four and a half feet, something like that. Rehabilitation of the Eighth Street generator, Eighth Street lift station generator. This generator was coming up on about 40 years old. It's natural gas powered. The bottom, you can see the floor, this is a hole in the floor, the floor had completely rotted out, so we pulled the generator out, put a new generator in and replaced the floor using the existing building and we have, again, we have infrastructure now that ought to last another 40 or 50 years. This generator is extremely important because when we have power outages like we've had in the last few days, this generator pumps all of the wastewater that comes from the entire north end of town across the river back into the gravity main to go on out to wastewater treatment plant. So without this generator, everything in the north end of town would basically stop flowing and back up. So extremely important infrastructure. Glad we got it done before the power outage. Another big project that typically when we have a, and this happens from time to time, we'll have a sewer blockage, we'll go out, we'll figure out that not only do we have a blockage, but the line has collapsed, not a big deal, we go out with backhoes, we dig it up, we leave in a piece, go on, and what we encountered at Grand Park was sewer pipe that just crumbled. We even dug it up using a hydro excavator, which is basically a power washer, hand dug, and when, as soon as we touched the pipe, it just crumbled. And so we couldn't, we kept digging back further and further trying to find a good piece of pipe. The entire pipe was just like this. And so we determined that we were going to have to temporary pump around this pipe from one manhole to the next and bypass it. We got a contractor in to lay new pipe and replace this section to the next manhole. The next phase of this project will be pipe bursting to enlarge this pipe. So basically from the northern third of Grand Park all the way south to Towanda, we'll pipe burst that and so the deterioration of this pipe is unlike anything I've seen or any of my people have ever seen. We think that it's because this pipe laid right next to the bottom of this creek that goes through Grand Park, so it was, for 72 years, I think, it's laid in saturated conditions. And so that's the only thing that we can explain why the pipe condition was so bad. So that is getting fixed. Manhole rehab at Havre and Towanda, Havre Hill and Towanda, one of the investigations that we did to prevent wastewater from backing up during extreme storm events in Butler, we found that the manhole that receives water from the lift station west of the college, around College Acres, where it dumps into the manhole, the inverts, which is basically a funnel that funnels water that's coming in to go out, those inverts were completely flat and was not channeling the water, so we went in, we created those channels to improve the flow characteristics, and then we also discovered another manhole that had completely deteriorated in only, what, 37 years, about 1980. And I think Scott was there when we were talking to the contractor and they said they'd never seen a manhole that that was that new, because it's concrete deteriorate the way it had, so that was rehabilitated. I'm going to breeze through these, I know where I'm at on time, but we do meter replacements all the time. One of the things we do when we do the meter replacements is we remove what's called stiff hookups to make the meters, the new meters that we install, the installation go much faster. Why are there so many leaks downtown? That's been the question on everybody's mind this last year. We've had a ton of leaks in the downtown area. I talked about the fact that it's the oldest lines in town, it's the highest pressure in town, and then we also have the constant vibration of heavy truck traffic. A lot of these lines, these 90 to 120-year-old lines are cast iron lines and if you've ever been in some of the buildings downtown, like the police station, when trucks go by, you can actually feel the vibrations. And so we've just, we've had a lot. One of the things that we're doing, obviously, this is the mess that we uncovered at Vine and Central when we had that leak, but when we have a leak like that, we dig back and we replace all of the infrastructure in the immediate area. So we're not just going in and fixing the leak, we're actually replacing anything that might potentially leak in the future. And so I'd like to think we're closer to getting the downtown area more bulletproof and, but we're looking at some other avenues to prevent future leaks also. Here's just some more shots of downtown. Some of the leaks are due to electrolysis. The leak that we just encountered on Central across from the courthouse, it had some pitting like this. Electrolysis occurs when there's stray current typically. The stray current is coming from a Kansas gas service line, they put current on their lines. Sometimes that current travels through the soil, wet conditions, and starts attacking or corroding the pipe from the outside. So we found some electrolysis on the 10-inch line on Central as well as the line on Gordy. And so we think that's the cause of that. And that project right now is, the pipe, the water main installation is all complete. We'll be flushing the line later this week and tying over services late this week, next week. Removing this water service at Grandview. Some of the projects we do at the wastewater plant on an annual basis, we burn all of the nata grass, we don't have to mow it, we do have to burn it. Some interdepartmental assistance. One of the projects that we figured out a better way to do is cleaning out the extraneous flow basin by utilizing the backon truck. The picture on the left here is a clarifier drive, they're rebuilding that. So while the wastewater plant is fairly new, it's only 12 years old, even after 12 years of continuous operation, we're starting to see some things that we're having to go in and rebuild. Sometimes it's the little things that matter. The picture on the left I love because if you notice this little guy right here in the striped shirt, he just had a ball out there that day. These are residents from the South Central Mental Health Center and they came out for a tour and I think our guys really find these types of things rewarding when they can share what they do with others and it's appreciated. And if, when we're not fixing leaks and doing other things, we might be spraying weeds downtown or mowing. Water treatment, wastewater treatment operators are working the Walnut River Water Festival. Well, we've taught classes at that event for the last 17 years. Robert Simmons received his 45-year service award. There's a picture of Robert at LKM with Governor Collier. We had a couple of retirements. One significant, Judy retired after 30 years of service, so we have a new administrative assistant. And then, of course, Dave Wendell, who was Gary's right-hand man, he retired. And Bob does a great job of passing on knowledge, he's still our teacher, and we take great pride in sharing that knowledge. We have a new administrative assistant and she's been dedicated to learning everything there is to know about public utilities so she can answer that phone better and answer questions. Some assistance, wastewater helped sewer maintenance guys figure out where some hydrocarbons were entering the sanitary sewer. This is my last slide before I get into the next subject. We helped Holly Frontier, they had a massive die-off in their wastewater treaters and so we basically gave them a transfusion of live bugs so that they could kickstart their process. So that's hogaboom out pumping what's called mixed liquor. That's the aeration basin contents that has the live bugs in it. So projects and initiative for 2019, development of wholesale water contracts for Augusta and others. Rural Water District meter replacements with MAG meters, we talked about that. Evaluation of sewer collection system and infrastructure needs. We've got some sewer televising projects going on in the south part of town right now to help us assess that. Evaluation and implementation of pressure monitoring in the distribution system, I mentioned that. Plan development to convert the old wastewater treatment plant into a water clarification facility. Develop and renew wholesale contracts with Rural Water Districts 1, 5, 6, and 7. I talked about the Grand Park and Meadow Road sewer interceptor replacement and then vapor rooting to keep tree roots out of sewer systems. Major trends and challenges, and this is my last slide, predicting water production distribution system needs and costs associated with increased production in the event that we need to expand either water or wastewater treatment plant. Addressing sewer infrastructure needs based on the results of the sewer televising that we're currently doing. Eliminating water hammer in the water distribution system so we can decrease those downtown water leaks. Replacing undersized unreliable two-inch water mains, that's been an ongoing goal over the years. And last, extension of water and sewer infrastructure to serve the industrial park expansion. And that's the end. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, I've got a couple. You said that you were going to be putting water pressure sensors in.
Yes.
Have you figured out, is that going to be in budget next year or is that going to be something you're going to come back to us asking for more money?
No, the meters are not that expensive and we've talked to rural water districts, all the rural water districts that we've talked to, there's an annual fee of, I think it's $250, so that they can access a website that we can also access to get both flow rates, so gallons per minute, how many gallons per minute are going through the meter as well as pressure. And so the districts are very happy about getting this information as part of their SCADA system. This will help detect early leaks and so you can basically go in and set up and say, hey, normally my flow's 200 gallons a minute. If I go up to 400 gallons a minute, I want you to beep my phone, send me a text message and say, hey, you've got something going on. And so they're happy about getting that, so they're going to pay that cost, we're just going to pay for the meter and we're going to install them ourselves. And so not a lot of cost there. We're talking about initially probably eight or 10 installations this year, I'm guessing, and that will give us a lot of information that we didn't formally have. There have been times over the years, and it happens several times a year, we get into a critical situation where, for instance, last summer, all of a sudden Industrial Park Water Tower just started falling. I mean, it was like somebody opened the spigot at the bottom and it was just dropping, dropping, dropping. And so I immediately got on the phone and I called Rural Water District 7, called 7, called 2, and said, hey, we think you've got a water leak. They got out, discovered the water leak, we had all our pumps going and I think they were losing, I want to say, he said they had 2,500 gallons per minute going through that meter. And so we're selling that water, but we're also at a risk of our system running completely down and if you lose pressure, and you hear this from other cities, they go on boil orders because they, because they lost system pressure. And so the challenge is get that valved off, get it, get the leak stopped quickly so that we don't lose system pressure and have to go on a boil order. So it'll alleviate that problem too.
Are you planning on putting any meters within the city to kind of monitor that?
I think we'd like to have something in the downtown area and I don't know where. I think the first thing that we talked about doing is we're going to do some things at the water plant, like switch pumps from one pump to another, from a smaller pump to a larger pump, and put some meters in the downtown area and do that and see what kind of pressure fluctuations. We're talking about this water hammer. So a water hammer is basically water's traveling in a direction and a valve shuts somewhere and it creates a wave of energy that goes backwards until it hits something else. And if it hits a weak spot in the pipe, that's where it's going to go. So we do have some plans to monitor downtown water pressure. If we are seeing, if this investigation determines that we are seeing some unexplained water hammers that could be coming from a rural water district valve shutting or anybody's valve that's taking a lot of water and they slam a valve shut, spin a fire hydrant down too quickly, there are devices that I'm looking into that you could, we could put one in the downtown area. It's a, it's basically a, it's a tank with a bladder in it that will absorb that energy so the water hammer, the energy can release into this bladder and not out the side of the pipe. So we're looking at that too.
You said the electrolysis was dissolved in a couple of pipes. Do you not, do you not check for that, like put anodes in or anything like that?
The gas company and this, in most locations, and we'll probably need to get with the gas company and see if there's still any pipes, but in these locations, the gas lines were still there, the old gas lines that had been abandoned. So the electrolysis actually happened probably 20 years ago. Since that time, they've replaced it all with plastic pipe. But if you look at the, it was really interesting on Gordy, if you look at the sides of the water pipe and the gas pipe, it looked like somebody took an arc welder and there's big black flashes on the sides of the pipe where that current was so strong that it was actually turning the outside of the pipe black on the gas line. And so I don't think there's a lot of that left in the system, but we can check for it when we encounter leaks. But most of the leaks that we have, where we find electrolysis, it's really old electrolysis, the damage has been done.
And then... And then just one more, do you have a master plan for water and sewer? Like, is there one already designed up in writing of what, like the next fifteen, twenty years is gonna be?
We're, we're working on that. Um, one of the things we're doing is, of course, the investigation into the, we, we know the condition of our residential lines, which were all eight-inch sewer lines. We pretty much know where those are. We know there's a lot of, of lining pipe that we need to do. The area that we don't know is what we're doing right now. All of these sewer interceptors, the, we had a large sewer interceptor project done around nineteen eighty. So almost forty years ago. And we do not have televising equipment to do the larger lines. And so basically for forty years, we haven't put eyes in the pipe. We don't know what's going on in those pipes. And that's what we're doing right now is to look at the condition of those sewer interceptors, look at the flow rates and see where we need to have larger interceptors. The answer is yes, but, um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts that we're looking at in both water and wastewater to, to evaluate. Where do we spend the money? I mean, it's easy to spend money. We gotta figure out what are the most critical needs. I can tell you right now, just as downtown water lines are the oldest pipes in town, so are the sewers. And the sewers in the downtown area are extremely deep, which makes them almost impossible to dig up and replace. So we really need to line those using cured and placed pipe before they deteriorate to the point where we're gonna have to dig, you know, twenty-foot deep holes.
Is that how deep it is down there?
Yeah, there's, there's some. We had to fix one years ago. We had to get a track hoe in. Um, it was kind of in the alley behind where, uh, Don's Heating and Air is now. But I mean, to dig a hole that deep, you've gotta bench it out. It's a huge excavation. And just to fix one little spot was a major. And so you can imagine if you start having failures in the downtown area. So that's probably the one that keeps me up at night. We need to, we, we've gotta spend money to make sure that our downtown sewer infrastructure is gonna last another hundred years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? I don't have any.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you Kurt.
Thanks Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come this evening and recap the year in parks, recreation, and cemeteries. I'll try to move through this, uh, quickly. So we're gonna start out talking about our pool, our forty-seven-year-old pool facility. Still holds water, still has great water quality. We have very little leakage from our pool. Most of our water loss during the course of the season is from splash out and evaporation. So we're very fortunate that when that was constructed forty-seven years ago, it was well done. Our pool attendance this year, as you can see, was down a little bit by about three hundred patrons. Don't have a very good explanation for that. Our special events were up, but it was our daily attendance that dropped. And it was largely at the tail end of the season. We usually experience a drop at the tail end. People are tired of coming to the rectangular pool every day. It's kinda lost its zest. But it dropped off a little more this year. So we're gonna try to add some special events later in the year this year to try to perk that back up just a little bit. As you can see, our twilight swims were up. Those are our Friday evening swims in darkness, basically, um, from eight o'clock till ten o'clock in the evening. When I started here fourteen years ago, some of those were Friday night at the Wild Wild West. We had lots of excitement that happened. They're really tame now, so I encourage everyone to come out. This year, we're, last summer and this summer, we've partnered with the Y M C A to conduct our swim lessons. We had very good numbers again last year. They were down just a little bit. Uh, most of that was attributed to a drop in, if I recall my numbers correctly, from Edu Care, Edu Care, not Edu Care, I'm sorry, First Baptist Daycare, brings a large group of kids every summer to swim lessons. And I believe their number was down just a little bit this past summer. But lots of positive feedback this year on our swim lessons. Our baseball and softball activities for last year, we were up thirty-five participants. That's a great number. That's from T-ball through age fifteen softball. So good numbers there. And basketball, pretty consistent. We lost one participant. Our volley number, volleyball numbers climbed by about thirty. So we're encouraged by that. Soccer numbers fairly consistent, down by about thirty-two or so. But a lot of that was upper-aged groups. There was a group that left El Dorado to go play more competitive soccer in Wichita. So that contributed to that decrease in attendance. Our flag football numbers were up. Um, if you've not watched our flag football program, I encourage you to do so. It's pretty entertaining. Some pretty good play and some fairly, um, spirited competition, let's put it that way. So this year, we had a total of one thousand three hundred ninety-nine youth participants in our program. So up forty participants from two thousand and seventeen. So a positive number for us. Our adult sports teams, this is where declines have occurred over the past several years. And basketball, um, from seventeen to eighteen, as you can see, was consistent this year. So our nineteen basketball, adult basketball number will be up. We're at seven teams this season. Softball, used to be huge in El Dorado, continues to struggle. Uh, these five teams, if I recall correctly, were all coed church teams. So we didn't have a men's league this year or a coed, which is disappointing. I think at some point it will turn back around, but I don't know when. And our women's volleyball took a little drop from seventeen to eighteen as well. And frankly, as we're moving into the winter season here in nineteen, our numbers are down. We haven't seen as many registrations this period. So I thought I'd share with you the, um, our staffing levels and what we maintain. As you can see, our ball fields and soccer fields, we have three full-time and six seasonal employees that maintain these. Total's about thirty-six acres of grass. That doesn't count the dirt that we maintain on those fields. So, um, they work hard. We've got, we've got good people working on these ball fields that are committed to making improvements. I'm very impressed with what our grass quality is on all of our fields right now. We've made significant strides in the last nine months. And I think that trend will continue with the personnel that we have in place. So our fields are improving. Really, as we speak, this moisture is fantastic for what we're trying to accomplish. Special events the rec department put on this year, we do our diva night. That's where we have students from the Paul Mitchell School come over and they do hair and makeup and nails for our participants in this program. We do that every two years. We have to recruit, fortunately, our administrative assistant Andrea joined us and she was really excited about this because three guys trying to put on a diva night program is not something that goes very well. So we just take direction and help her out the best we can. Every March, we do a mother-son bowling program in conjunction with Grizzly Bowl. They're great to work with, have been very helpful. Um, and it always fills up. Of course, our Fourth of July celebration at East Park. And the Fourth of July fireworks that follow the Broncos game are usually very popular and were again this year. Uh, we do the pitch hit and run, which is part of the M L B, uh, program to get kids, um, involved in baseball and softball activities. We had a participant from El Dorado on the boys' side do very well. I can't remember how far he advanced, but did very well. And then every December, we do a holiday craft party at the end of the, uh, semester for school. That's usually hosted by us at the senior center. This year's numbers were about on par. In fact, a little higher this year. I think we had forty or fifty participate in that. Our park system, as you can see, we have a hundred and, almost a hundred and fourteen acres of parks that we maintain. And we're doing that with two full-time staff and seven seasonal employees. So they go hard every day, basically from March until October, just trying to stay on top of mowing and, and trimming. Uh, but they do a great job. Um, we have lots of park projects coming up that I'll talk about here in just a few minutes. We have several parks that we rent gazebo space or shelter space. In two thousand and eighteen, we had a hundred and twenty of those reservations. That doesn't mean that that's the total use. Those are the ones that have paid a fee to make sure they have space at one of our shelters. And we don't do that in every park. But, um, that number is fairly consistent, as you can see, from the past years. And it usually is in that neighborhood of a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty. And this is the breakdown. These are the parks that we do offer reservations, East Park, North Main, North Main Gazebo, Forest, and Gordy. Gordy are at least used park, but with some changes that we're making there, that may change. Moving on to the cemeteries, we have two full-time cemetery workers and five seasonal employees that maintain fifty-seven acres plus all the headstones and grave sites at the three cemeteries. We have new cemetery Sexton this year. Um, he's taken on some big challenges and has a, has a desire to make lots of positive changes. He started some of those. There's been lots of tree trimming that's happened at the cemeteries that we're now seeing headstones that we hadn't seen in several years that were covered by some of these trees. So they're making lots of progress and I'm pleased with the direction that he's taking that. Uh, sadly, in two thousand and eighteen, we had a hundred and two burials in our cemeteries. We sold fifty new lots. That's a number that I'm always happy to see decrease. Um, so that's a plus for this year. In addition to the park land and the recreation land that we maintain, uh, Parks and Recreation also takes care of, uh, grass at all the other public facilities. So that totals a hundred and eighty-seven point two five acres that we're doing with the staff that I've mentioned to you. So, um, they're busy. They keep mowers humming through the course of a summer.
I'm gonna pause you real quick. Can you go back?
I'll try.
Are you still, are you, you're still mowing the museum?
We are not currently. That, so you can take eight point five acres.
I just wanted to be.
I'm glad.
It popped up.
I was getting ready.
So we are not maintaining that any longer. Okay, as mentioned, we have some projects coming up for this year. At East Park, we've started on the new park shelter. Again, I said I'm happy about the moisture. I'm also kinda bummed about the moisture because it's slowing down our progress on some of these projects. We do have the posts in the ground ready for a shelter. We've got some concrete to pour. And our goal is to have that shelter back open by the end of March. Hopefully, we'll have some concession and restroom improvements at the ball fields at East Park. We won't see any work start on that until after the ball season. So that will be a fall project before we get to that. At Grand Park, we're going to construct a new shelter. The two shelters that are there are small, have been there since the inception of the park. Uh, we're gonna make some changes to those, put up a larger structure near the spray park. And we're also adding a half basketball court to replace one that is in very poor condition toward the south end of the park. The Gordy Park play, project, we have new playground equipment ordered on its way. We've taken out the equipment that is there. Uh, part of that's gonna be relocated to the boys' baseball fields by the batting cage to give the siblings of some of our participants something to climb on other than our batting cages. So I think that'll be a good repurpose of some of that equipment. The equipment that's going to Gordy is designed for ages five to twelve. So we're excited about that and should change the, the look of that park considerably. Library Park, we also have playground equipment that's coming for that. Um, that playground equipment that's going in is gonna be designed for kids from two to five. In some of the past surveys we did with the master plan, uh, one of the comments was we didn't have playground equipment for kids below the age of five. So we thought the library would be a great place to do that in conjunction with the programs they offer. So that equipment will be here sometime in February. Will be installed after we do the Gordy Park project. And we're also gonna add a half a basketball court at the library. And, um, some of that work has started on that basketball court. Again, we need a little weather cooperation before we can finish that. Also on our radar for this year is a shelter at Summit Park. We have two small gazebo-type structures there now. They've been used and abused. And so we're gonna try to upgrade that just a little bit. North Main Park, um, the split rail that we have all over town really is becoming difficult to maintain. It's just old. So we're going to start in sections, replacing some of this as budget will allow. We're gonna use split rail that's more like what you see along the bike path. Um, it's a little thicker, um, sturdier split rail. So I think it'll add some positive look to these parks. Again, that will be an ongoing, over the course of the next several years, project. We're not gonna just rip out split rail at North Main and go crazy. But as sections need to be replaced, we're gonna start going in that direction. Uh, we have some bike path solar lighting that's coming. Um, Public Works, um, is helping with that project. And Public Works is helping with a lot of these projects. I need to give, um, credit to them and their crews for all that they're helping us with. Um, as you know, we're having discussions about tennis courts. Those are ongoing. We have a little funding for some picnic table replacements and additions. And we're going to be adding some wireless scoreboard controllers to the activity center. The scoreboard controllers there are twenty-plus years old. They're coax. They work, but sometimes we have to hold our head just right to get them to work. So we're gonna upgrade and come into this century and go to the wireless controllers. There's several ball field improvement projects on our radar. Mitchell Field, which is T-ball field, we'd like to get some irrigation installed there. Uh, have the plans drawn up for that. Uh, the Central Park, which is boys' field, we wanna get some additional commons irrigation done. Uh, we're still planning to add some shade structures at the boys' field, another batting cage at the boys' field. Uh, we wanna add some shade structures at East Park, girls' softball. Enhance the common area lighting. Once we turn the lights off down there, it gets dark in a hurry. So we need to make some changes to get some light to the parking lots there. Uh, we're adding dugout covers at both the boys' baseball and girls' softball fields. And we have some water fountains to install on both of those places. So we have a full laundry list of things to get accomplished. That's what I have in summary. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
When you talk about the number of full-time employees that do the, I think it was the three different sections, are those, do any of those overlap?
When I listed one for, uh, the ball field maintenance, he overlaps between recreation programming. So he's not out all of the time on ball fields. Um, the parks and recreation staff help each other out. So while they're dedicated in our, um, budgeting process to parks or recreation, they do overlap with one another. Our cemetery staff is pretty much dedicated solely to cemetery unless we have a special project. Anything else?
Bike path lights, are those in addition to the new project or are those for the new project?
These are lights that we've kinda had on our radar screen for about the past year. The lighting that's happened along the path in North Main Park, um, was in conjunction with West Star. That is not part of this. So these would be separate. I'm not sure.
No, no, the new, the new path coming in.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be different lighting.
Different, in addition to the new, the new path that's coming in?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks. Kevin and Kurt, thanks for the work and thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. Uh, moving on to item eleven on our agenda would be the application to rezone twelve thirty-seven West First Avenue.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, Plating Commission held a public hearing on December thirteenth to consider this matter. They held that public hearing and, and weighed the, what they heard from the public hearing as well as They held that public hearing and, and weighed the, what they heard from the public hearing as well as what's included in the staff memo, and recommended approval of the rezone from R one to R three with a five-zero vote. I'll step up to the. Show you map, Adrian. The subject property is hatched here in blue. It is bounded to the north by First Avenue and already zoned R three property to the south along Central Avenue.
I read the Planning Commission minutes.
Uh huh.
And there were concerns of some residents about drainage?
Yes. There has been drainage problems along Residence Street. The city's been aware of it. We've done some things over the years. Residents in the middle of the block between First Avenue and Central is a slump, and there is some stormwater infrastructure. Everything from Summit Street, the High Point, drains through those backyards to Residence into an area drain. The drainage will be reviewed as part of site planning for the project, not necessarily about the land use. However, staff feels that the way the development is gonna occur, it'll give a good opportunity to reroute existing water north and south instead of onto the west to Residence Street.
I also, I think I understand, but I'm not sure that I really do. Throughout the entire Planning Commission minutes, it talked about, I guess Jay kept saying, you are voting on the zoning, you are not voting on what's going on the property.
Right. They approve the uses of the land, so.
So does that mean then after, if it's rezoned R three, is what's going on there, does it come back to the Planning Commission?
No.
As long as they stay within the residential zoning?
For R three, anything that's allowed in R three. The developer and his representative over here, if you have any questions of them, but other than that, I'm available as well.
I mean, even though the minister did not, even though Jay told them they were voting on zoning and not what went on there, Mr. Watson has pretty much said, I guess Mr. Cutzinger said it for him, that he was looking at senior housing that they would purchase, not rent.
Yeah, the desire of the applicant and the developer is to put in multifamily senior housing, duplex town-owned type setup where they would be owned by that occupant, the, the home, the structure itself would be owned by the occupant, and an HOA would maintain the grounds, the driveways, and the entrance roads.
But even though that's what he says he wants to do.
That has no bearing on your decision, nor, nor should it. I mean, it's, we're approving a land use. We aren't approving a development.
Is the intent, and this may be a question for Roger, I don't know. Is the intent, Roger, to come from Residence all the way through that, through that lot that's already zoned R three and have a drive that goes from Residence to Central?
First to Central.
First.
Or first to Central, I'm, I'm sorry.
Trying to figure you out here, it wasn't working.
It would be a combination of the lot currently zoned R three, the blue hatched lot, with a access that would travel from Central Avenue.
You could access it from, from Central or First.
Yeah, and, and I've talked to KDOT on the applicant's behalf on this, and that's something they think they're willing to consider because driveways are a really difficult thing to relocate or, or get new ones approved. This will function nicely for that area. It'll more than likely be a one-way alley to the north.
That was.
An alley, but owned by the HOA, not, not a true alley that the city would maintain.
And I, I've watched the Planning Commission meeting and read the minutes too, and I think the main concern was the drainage, and when you said that that would be addressed at
Site plan review of staff, yes.
So, so at that point then, your department would say, this is the way, you need to do this, so the water goes this way and this way?
And their design professionals would come up with that as prior to us even seeing it, so.
Okay. By law, they can't put their water on anybody else's property. It's either gotta go to
Right.
the storm drainage or be contained, and so I would surmise that the project would enhance the whatever flooding or water problems might be in the area.
I think that would be welcome down through there also.
Because they can't, I mean, just like the site plan review, R three requires, requires a design professional be involved, and if it were, if it stayed as single family, then there wouldn't be any. There's really not much way to manage that or regulate it, but being R three, it has certain restrictions to be able to build in that.
Other court.
I, I felt very good about the idea of the development, not knowing until the applicant came in and visited with me, that I saw an avenue for improvement to an area where the city does not have drainage easements, does not have infrastructure. We've worked with the neighbors and, and done some work on private property to help some things out, but there's just not a good way for us to handle it. So I, I feel like this development's gonna, gonna help that neighborhood.
And as I look at it with R three, next, you know, it's certainly not spot-zoned by any stretch, and it's contiguous with R three that's already there and R three to the west on the west side of Residence. I, I don't, and in reading through the, the, the rules or the questions, the facts determine the, the application, I, I didn't see, I, I respect and I appreciate the concerns about drainage, but I think based on it moving to what it is, it would be easier for the drainage to be taken care of, so. This might, that's.
With a project like this, rather than leaving it as a house, a house lot, I agree with that.
No, but, but, but to Kendra's comment, I think this is appropriate to say, it's a land use. I mean, we can make this zoning change and the, and the project, for whatever reason, not proceed, this zone to be this and can be whatever fits on an R three, even though this project, perhaps this project doesn't get done, so. But with that in mind, and those same reasons I just stated, I, I still don't see a reason to not consider it, so. Any other further questions or comments? Thank you, Scott.
Yep.
If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I move to approve case number eighteen dash oh four dash REZ, requesting a rezoning of twelve thirty-seven West First Avenue to R three multiple-family dwelling district, and that ordinance number? G twelve ninety-four be approved.
I'll second it.
Okay, so moving second, any further question or comment? If are none, then roll call.
Chair Haines?
Yes.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Thank you.
Next, we have public hearing for projects numbers four twenty-one, four twenty-two, four forty-three, four forty-four, four thirty-six, four thirty-seven, five twenty-three, five thirteen, five fourteen, and five thirty-five. This is the litany of projects we talked about at our last commission meeting.
I got five thirty-eight.
Five thirty-eight.
Five thirty-eight or five thirty-five? I got five thirty-five on the agenda and five thirty-eight in this information.
It is five thirty-eight.
Okay. Thank you. We plan to do this with one public hearing, or do we need a public hearing for each project?
Just one public hearing and one more.
All right, these are projects we talked about at our last commission meeting and decided to schedule public hearing as today for these. Any further questions or comments from the commission? Being none, I would open public hearing for these projects. Anyone from the audience wish to address the commission regarding these projects? Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Move on to to, if there's no further comments, I would entertain a motion.
Number?
I move to approve ordinance number G one two nine five, an ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, as previously authorized by the city, and providing for the collection of such special assessments.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further question, comments? Being none, have roll call.
Commissioner Guthrie?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Chair Haines?
Yes. Thank you. Next thing on our agenda would be a resolution of support for tax credit application. David, do you have any background information you'd like to share on that?
The request in front of you is regarding the Greiler addition unplatted, or I'm sorry, unplatted but undeveloped lots as the exhibit in your packet demonstrates. As you recall, at the last meeting, the city commission approved an agreement to sell that property contingent upon a tax credit application and award of tax credits for the project. And so what the applicant is requesting here is that we provide a resolution of support for the tax credit application. Cities, the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation requires cities to submit a resolution of support with the application, and so this is, this would shut that box off for the applicant for that. So again, it is tax credits through the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation for the undeveloped piece or properties of the Greiler addition that the city has a contract of a hundred thousand dollars, so with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
What's the ballooned area on the map?
We, we have a map that's also got a clouded area in it. What's?
Yes.
What's that?
Um, so Scott will pull that up on the display.
The, the clouded area you have within your map, the origi, the original map that was put together. The developer showed buildable area, buildable kind of lots within the undeveloped area of Greiler Edition. The clouded area shows the additional, the addition of more lots that the city has no desire, or at least staff has no desire of owning an island of property within that development. That is all pipeline right-of-way that New Star and Magellan currently operate pipelines in. The developers are more than willing to take that property to try to accommodate his plating for additional green space. So we will get away from maintaining it forever, and it'll be part of his development where he'll take over maintenance, so.
So chances are it won't be used for housing.
It, it can be.
It, used for backyards of housing, yeah.
There's no digging.
So that wasn't part of the original, what you sent, what you, we talked about last week?
That was a modification.
That's, okay.
Okay, so it's additional property?
Yes, yes.
That we're gonna convey under the same purchase?
Yeah, that is, yeah, that we deemed as no value to us. It, it's beneficial to him. Add green space to the backyards. We don't have to maintain it. No one else wants pipeline right-of-way property, so.
What will be the resolution number?
Twenty-eight seventy-five.
Seven lots to mount.
Okay, any further questions or comments regarding this topic? Being none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number twenty-eight seventy-five, a resolution to support of MRE Capital LLC, application for tax credits from the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further question, comment? If in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be city commission and advisory reports. Go down the line.
I got my new water bill today. And I want to compliment the city on the, of course, it's a very clear understanding of the water bill for us older people who have to put our glasses on to read, where it says paid by draft, maybe a couple, a couple of font sizes bigger, so we catch, catch on that. It has a very nice newsletter in this one. It gives you a little bit of information. One of them is on the survey that is also enclosed in your water bill. Again, asking for input from the citizens of El Dorado about different things. And we, as commissioners, look at these things. We want to know what you're thinking, what you feel, and how you rate things. So when you get your water bill, fill this out. It tells you on the newsletter about the survey and where you can mail it, or you can even do it online. So the online's easy. If you want to just take it and bring it down, I'm sure Tabitha will get it. On the back, it talks about the new company coming to town, Union Tank Car, and some career opportunities within the city. So again, a quick read, but very informational, the survey. Fill it out and get it back to us, and then you have this that explains your water bill. Awesome, they, I like it. I like the new setup better, so. Good job.
Thank you.
Of course, I was a little worried when I got this huge, huge envelope
That was a segue when I, I was like, really?
From the city. I wasn't quite sure what it was. That's all.
I've got two non-committee things. I received a phone call last Thursday from a gentleman very excited about a tire falling off of a car in a pothole on Ninth Street. He, he was, he was a resident of the area, but not on Ninth Street. And he, he started to explain to me that there's no way that we've done anything to that street for thirty years, blah, blah, blah. And I explained to him that I kind of compared it to Douglas Street, that it might be one of those things where the residents on Ninth Street just didn't want it fixed. So I wanted to kind of start with, what is the history on Ninth Street? I'm assuming I'll have to look over here.
So, yeah, Ninth Avenue is, has, has been within the capital improvement plan for a number of years. The, the real hurdle that has held that up is the improvement of the BNS track crossings. When the Ninth Avenue Bridge was built and that intersection was approved, the hope in the following years would, we would see that improvement of the road. The remaining of the road, about, um, half, a little less than half of it is right away of Burlington Northern Santa Fe. So those assessments get very large to those adjacent property owners, cause bearing a lot of cost. There is six or five tracks there that they want to keep in service. The last quote we received was a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars per track to redo those. There has been economic development projects over the last few years. That we have had discussions about improvements on those tracks and maybe that would spur or reduce that cost. Just that cost alone with the rails, a huge cost to the street and the improvement district and the city in large. Not to mention new drainage pipes we'd have to put underneath the right away. The drainage culvert that exists today is old railroad ties. The road has been milled, the surface has been milled and, and rolled. I know Public Works tries to take it greater down as often as they can. The elevation of the tracks is so different.
Right.
Part of the cost is, we, we've, we've talked about, well, maybe we just do an overlay on the railroad right away and improve both ends. Think necessarily that's what the citizens want or would appreciate just as rough ride with maybe a new surface in between the tracks.
Well, I mean, I, I just, after my conversation with him, um, it was a, I mean, I, I can't disagree that, that something needs to happen down there. It's, it's one of those streets in town that, um, it, it goes right up to the city property with the, the pool. And, you know, I, I don't think, and I really don't think what his topic was, was the railroad tracks. I think his topic was everything else, in between the bridge to Taylor.
Down by the, down by the van shell and the shelter, it gets very rough whenever it gets wet and rains.
Right.
I, I bet you after the weather we've had here lately, it's.
He was excited, don't get me wrong. Um, I just think, I, I, I can't disagree that that wasn't something that we need to look at. So, um, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention that, that, that came up. And then something that, it came, I, I came across this last week when I was looking at the, our, our great hole on Central. And then today, when I saw an oversized overweight vehicle not turn on the, um, truck route at Haverhill. Went straight through town, right into our construction zone, all the way down through. Now I know that that is a conversation that happens between KDOT and, and a, and it's not only that, but I've had three vehicles stop at my, at my, where my work is to try to get to the, um, the, out to the dump with some heavy equipment. And he, they were saying the same thing, that it's not wide enough for them to put their equipment through. What do we have to do to keep those oversized loads from going, going down Central?
Right now with the construction on Central, and, and even if you guys go to Google Maps or whatever, it gets, it gets like this. When we have construction like that and we narrow a lane down and an alert goes out and we notify KDOT. So there is a restriction on Central today that no oversized load shall traverse. So how that guy went on through?
Oh, he just kept cruising with escort and, and, and trail car.
Yeah, I, I don't know of a good way to stop that with, without having just someone man the corners of the truck route.
Well, no, and I, and I, I'm, the, you, you guys officers do a great job catching them. I mean, I'm not, I'm not complaining in any way, it's just that with the, you know, I, I've noticed as, since I do live on Central, that when more heavy traffic goes through down Central, let's say we get wind turbines or, you know, sections of that. My sewer line has troubles. We, we've, it's slowly gotten better, cause I think we've gotten less traffic on Central. But with the water line issue and, you know, Kirk's presentation, it seems to me that, um, we've got some old lines that go across Central. And I, I mean, my stubout's new, but I doubt going from my house across the street is new at all. So I, I just, it seems that that is a, a, a problem causing other issues. And I just like to put that on everybody's radar also, that, that's, might be a little bit personal project, I'll admit that. But I mean, it's, um, I just see it perpetually getting a little bit more troubles as I live here, live on that house longer, so.
It, it's something we, we, we try to work, Kirk's guys as well, work with the industry. Everyone we can talk to, we talk to them about that.
And the, the three trucks that stopped at my office said the exact same thing, they told me to go straight through. My permit tells me go straight through Central.
Well, and their permit also says they need to contact the city of El Dorado. So they'll say that, but it, it does say on there. And in, in any way, they shouldn't have been going down there with the oversized loads restriction because of the construction.
Right.
Um, which has come a long ways in just the last two years, um, KDOT being able to map that quickly. I mean, we're try, we're trying, um, submitted a proposal idea for KU and K-State students to work on our situation and how that is statewide as well. And if there could be any remedies to those problems with the navigation of GPS the truckers utilize and posted truck routes. That's, that's a project they're gonna possibly, I would love to see even funded, I think that'd be a good research project for those students. But we submitted for that and just really try everything we can to let folks know that we're, we're a little unique. I mean, we have our own local truck routes. The city, citizens of El Dorado paid a lot of money for them and, uh, we need people to pay attention to our signage.
Um, and then we had a Parks and Rec meeting last week after our, um, our work session. I was there on the tail end of that meeting. The, the designs for the, 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 the two new, um, playgrounds were, were approved through the, that Parks and Rec meeting. I like the designs and think that the citizens will really get some good use out of those. And CDB, I didn't quite make that meeting, so I don't have those minutes yet. That's all I got.
We had a meeting with El Dorado Inc. last Thursday. Their staff is trying out the new software that they have received, they've been working on it. We talked about the land sale on the Greiler addition. We talked about the IPS cleanup and, uh, whether they're gonna send a delegation of El Dorado Inc. members to the county commission. They feel that the progress on IPS hasn't, hasn't moved forward. And so they are thinking about sending a delegation to the county commission. Uh, they talked about that they're having weekly meetings with the chamber, the city, the college, Main Street workforce and El Dorado Inc. They're having weekly meetings with David, Scott, and Linda for economic development. And David talked to the group about the celebratory trails.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't, uh, just a couple of things, I'll run through the, I missed the Inc. meeting, but their annual meeting's coming up the twenty first. Tomorrow I'm going to be attending a, uh, airport panel discussion for the Wichita Eisenhower Airport, that's through REIT. Linda and I are going over, uh, to participate in that. I'm not, uh, I think it's about how, uh, it's a panel discussion on low fares and how to, how to, how to help that. Main Street met today, we, they primarily went through bylaws and getting ready for two thousand nineteen work plan. I think we'll be seeing a report or seeing something out of Main Street in the near future on that. Library board is on Mondays and they're, those particular days are difficult for me, so I have not actually been able to attend a library board meeting for a couple of months. My apologies for that. Mayor's dinner, I think, is scheduled for twenty eighth of February coming up. We'll invite all the mayors from, from the county. And, um, I think we're gonna, we, we try and have that at the Performing Arts Center this year. So that'll be good. That's all I have to report on. David, do you have anything for city manager to report?
Commissioner Wilkinson mentioned the citizen surveys, just another reminder that if you'd like to participate in the drawing for the utilities, that deadline is noon on February fifteenth, although we will accept them after that. You just won't be eligible for the drawing and then we'll assemble that information and get that to you all, so you can, um, get a review of it and then we can start using that for some discussion purposes. The finance department has been awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the two thousand seventeen year ended CAFR. So that, that's a national award that, um, requires a peer review of the city's comprehensive annual financial report. So you send it in and then they send it to, I think, two or three, um, financial advisor, financial directors or assistants or what have you that review it and then provide comments based on criteria that the GFOA has, has established. And I think we've received it for several years, um, and so we've, we've gotten it again. And then as previously mentioned, the state of the city is scheduled for four P M. on January thirty first at the Train Depot. We'll have a number of different topics about what we've accomplished in two thousand eighteen and what we're looking to focus on in two thousand nineteen. So if you are interested in the, in the state of the city, I'd encourage you to come to that event, again, at four P M. on January thirty first. And I think that's, the only other thing that I had, uh, again, Commissioner Wilkinson pointed out the new bill that folks have been receiving. We have been getting a lot of questions about the, why is the bill a little bit different in terms of the amount? The actual dollar amount shouldn't be too much different, it'll, it'll vary from month to month. A dollar or a few cents based upon your usage, but the primary difference in the unit is that we are now billing in gallons per thousand gallons as opposed to cubic feet. So that is a, the big difference that we've had to explain to people as they call in, what is the, the primary difference? We are billing again in thousand gallons, so it looks like you've used less than you would in cubic feet. But the, the conversion is the same, so your bill, your dollar amount will be roughly the same based upon your volumes per month. So, um, that's the primary driver. And again, we'll, we'll have a newsletter included in that and some other miscellaneous information. So it does feel thicker, um, but the intent is that we can use that as a tool to help communicate things to the general public as well.
Good. Thank you.
Oh, and we also wanted to let, uh, got a text here, got a lot of information from, um, technology. Uh, so we got some information from Westar, one, they wanted to let us know that crews are fighting galloping lines caused by ice and wind in the El Dorado area. Multiple crews are searching for trouble spots and searching these, securing these conductors. Um, as you may have known, we've, we've had some electrical issues throughout the day and I guess it's continuing. So Westar is on, on the call and they are trying to get those situations addressed as quickly as they can amid the weather that we are dealing with now.
Breaking news?
Breaking news.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda would be executive session. For, for, uh, ongoing litigation, how much time, uh, do we need?
She said five minutes.
Five minutes? So how about eight o'clock?
You ready?
Yeah.
I move to recess into executive session pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception on your KSA seven five dash four three one nine B two. For the purposes of discussing ongoing litigation and to reconvene the meeting at eight?
Eight o'clock.
Eight P M. in the city commission room. The city attorney will be attending via conference call.
It's been moved in second, any further question? If you have a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero, we shall retire to executive session until, and reconvene at eight o'clock. Thank you.